Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna have to go ahead and roll call. The mic works?
Can I give you gun?
Yes, but I will.
I can sort of...
Test, test, test.
Thanks.
Okay.
I hope you got stick in this room here.
Counselor Thomas. Counselor.
Here.
Counselor, um, here, Mayor Dunbar, too. Counselor Langdon.
Here.
Counselor Aston.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Here.
And Counselor here.
Here.
Is there anybody here with a matter that is not on the agenda? I think I see about everybody here for street closure, so... So, special request, we got quite a few of them tonight. The good news is, when we start getting special requests, we know it's going to be spring in some sense, so yeah, so let's get that. So, the first item, um, street closure and noise ordinance waiver for the Greencastle Music Fest, so I think I saw Gail. So, I'll just ask if everybody can kind of be brief, and most of these, I think, we approve about every year, so everybody should be pretty familiar.
We could do shamrock as well.
Uh, yeah, we could probably do shamrock and, uh, music fest, same one. We're gonna do both of them, Gail.
Okay. Good evening, City Council members, Mayor Dunbar. Thank you for allowing me to put in a request for the Greencastle Music Fest, which will be, uh, number sixteen. And I think you have... So, the street closures like it has been in the past, it worked out very well. Um, hopefully this year, there won't... Well, there will be construction, well, I don't even know why I said that, but, um... But I will tell you, even with it last year, we had four thousand people in two days, and they all got there. So, um, never fails. But as you see, it's, um, the request is for, um, beginning on Thursday night, when the stage comes in, about ten o'clock, we set it up. And I need it closed from that time until nine o'clock Sunday morning. And, um, Franklin Street from Jackson Divine, Indiana Street from Washington to Columbia.
I think yours would probably be on a specified ten o'clock.
Oh, yes, sorry about that. Um, and then the, um, shamrock, which is coming up on March the fifteenth. And we're just, uh, needing to close the street downtown for Franklin Street, uh, from Jackson to Franklin Street Divine, uh, from six AM to noon. The run starts at ten. And, um, the city police have been great to work with. They, they, they have cars at the major intersections. And then the other intersections, we have volunteers. And it's more like a rolling closure. And then should we change the route just a little bit? And I've got Jason from the parking lot. And we're gonna not only start out in downtown Greencastle, but we'll go and run around the park, and run down Anderson, Anderson, Anderson Street, and then take a lap around the park, and then come back. So, we'll get the park downtown and the beautiful park. So, that's the goal. And then, oh, back to Music Fest, the noise ordinance, um, is from, uh... I think I'll cut it off in eleven PM.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
No.
Want to entertain a motion?
I would move that we, uh, allow these two events to... If the streets close, it's requested.
We've got a motion? We've got a motion, second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Gail.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next thing on our agenda is our Putnam, couple Putnam Cycling Event. I think Putnam County is becoming a cycling community.
It is. Yeah, thank you very much, it was a great event last year. We're just really grateful for the opportunity. Thank you to the police, sheriff's. Uh, yeah, we had about a hundred and seventy-five riders last year. Same sort of thing this year, we already have a hundred and eighty. So, Franklin from College to Indiana from seven AM to four PM on Saturday, June the twenty-first, is our ask, so we're excited. Any questions for myself about the event or closure? All right, great. Right on the spread.
If there's enough, um, questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
A second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so anybody opposed? You're good to go? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, the North to Morse five K.
April twelve. Um, it's a six-thirty PM start. All we're asking is to close Indiana Street in front of Morse Bar from Washington to Walnut. Um, I work with the, uh, people police on the two crossings. I have maps, if you would like a copy of the map of the route through town. Um, and all of the benefits, all of the funds from the road race go to the My King Kansas Martin Scholarship Fund in Indiana.
Hey, does anybody have any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Move approved.
Everybody have a motion? A second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is street closure request and noise ordinance waiver for the Tar five K and after party celebration.
Hello, everyone. So, your next five K is a kinetic change. And it's on June fourteenth. And we just have kind of the rolling temporary street closures that the police have helped us with in the past. It's the same route, um, five o'clock on June fourteenth. And then following that, we're asking for a street closure in front of Morse, from Washington to Walnut.
Walnut, thank you.
And a noise ordinance waiver, and we would stop music at eleven. And then, we got the help from Lori, getting the okay for the after party, helping me get whatever we need for...
Insurance.
Insurance. Any questions?
Do you have the one for the downtown?
Well, we've got a Morse ordinance waiver. We've got some... We've got the five K one.
We've got the five K route.
I'm sorry.
You're going, and then you've got the point order for the after party. Morse Bar.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, so I need to know about that.
Need to make you come back another month.
Okay, I can do that.
I think you could still approve it.
I can. We just...
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Sometimes it's the same as what you've done in the past.
Same as always, since the twelfth year. I'll make a motion to approve all three with people coming.
I second it.
Our street closure. So, we have a motion, second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then we have, the next item on the agenda is, uh, Main Street Greencastle for the Farmer's Market, okay?
I thought that was sort of, it's the Chamber of Commerce for Farmer's Market.
It probably is. Oh, I'm sorry, it's your first Friday, so... I'm looking at, I'm looking at one thing and you're the exception. Let's do, uh, and make sure...
Do you want to swear my keychain?
Okay, I'll be presenting that this year. Uh, we're in between executive directors, so this is the same as what we have had every year. For the Chain, the Chamber has, uh, run that and employed the market, um, managers and been taking care of that. So, we're requesting the same as what we've had last fifteen years.
I'll make a motion, be accepted.
A second.
Is, did you sort of close all the vine tree? Or just the corner square and do all?
Yeah, I closed it just because of vine.
Yeah, sometimes they...
On the market?
I mean, they don't always have enough vendors, but sometimes they do.
That's usually when I come up, I just usually try to...
Yep.
Yeah, sometimes it's closed.
Sometimes, sometimes they have enough. Hopefully, we have enough.
Okay, okay.
Everybody have any question?
I motion to second.
So, we got enough to say? Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
And then opposed. Okay, now, Kate, sorry. I got one turnover, it's from the general.
Uh, this is for Main Street, first Fridays, um, pretty much same as in the past years. Um, so the Franklin Street from Jackson to Vine, Indiana Street to Walnut, and then to Franklin. So, the first Fridays were May through... The, 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 all the way through, so...
Okay, you got some of the goods in there for the cross Friday, right?
Yeah.
Very good.
How'd that go?
It deferred, but I think it was, I'm, I'm six weeks in. But I think it was the morning of our change. And it was cold, but I enjoyed it.
Every, every shop we went in had more people than we would normally see, so... At least, the group I was walking with had a good time.
Okay, any questions?
Then, just, uh, now, did we usually close the street at four o'clock, or was it five o'clock?
I had my notes from previous years five, but I may try to get on that.
I thought it was four.
Okay, so if you'll change it to four?
I'll make a motion, be passed, this will change it to four.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, um, department reports, which you have all in your package. We're actually missing a couple departments, um, that we've got a big water leak out on, uh, by Walmart, and it's a big one. So, I think a couple of them are out there. Um, it was so deep that we were not able to do it. Uh, it's a fifteen foot down. And, uh, it's a big one, so it, yeah, it's out there. So, a lot of them are out there tending to that. Uh, so, we've got police, and fire, and cemetery park, and planners, so... Anybody have any questions for them, or you guys think they could do?
Jason. Which has he worn?
Which one am I gonna use?
Yeah, cemetery park.
I'm gonna stand up, so he's gonna end up talking, quoting. I do read these reports. And yours was the most unique report I've seen in my short tenure on this board. Now, I know your background, we go back a long way.
Yeah, we do.
Polkery was especially, if I remember accurately. Well, between the two of us, we know a lot of stuff about livestock.
I don't think I wrote anything about chickens.
Yeah, you did. I want to know why you're involved with fetal pig dissection.
All right. Well, you could've said it was the park. Okay. So, we, we are offering a really cool program. We've offered, this is the second year we've offered it, uh, at the Parks Department. We're offering a very cool program, and mainly with the homeschoolers, because they're obviously homeschools. Uh, we are over spring break, um, doing a similar program for the kids who go to public school, um, just that spring break week. Um, I don't know if we'll do fetal pigs, but, um, it's a steam or stem program. So, we've learned about soil management and, um, water runoff. A lot of things touching on like, um, stormwater utilities, which I didn't even realize when we planned all this, that we were doing it. One of our, um, sessions was, uh, eco collapse, where we're learning about what happens if you have any suspected oil spill, and like, if you use robotics to clean up the oil spills. Um, eco collapse is a really cool program where they play Jenga, but you have so many of each, um, producers, consumers, and they have to put them all in there, and then they throw out, like, the Jenga tower. You know, so many consumers, and so many producers out of the tower, to see what happens if you, you know, um, if you take out all the producers, the tower might collapse, so if you take out all the consumer, the tower collapses. So, it's a really cool program, uh, blast to, or storm water, and then we did a fetal pig dissection with a bunch of, um, squeamish teenage children. Early teenage children.
Squeamish adults.
I'm glad I'm out of it.
So, I can say that it was one of the coolest things that I've seen with the homeschoolers. Um, little tiny fetal pigs, like, what I dissected in college, were much bigger than this. Some of these things are like, you can't even see some of the things, because they're so small. Um, but initially, we had some kids that were like, oh, I'm gonna throw up, and they were leaving, you know. By the end, I mean, our worst culprit by the end was dissecting, you know, like, the brain tissue and everything. She was so excited, and they were dissecting the tendons, and I'm like, oh, my goodness. So, everything went really, really well, and Purdue had, I don't know, extension educator at Purdue had a specialty for that. Um, and I'm hoping that we can do a dissection, maybe not fetal pigs, because they're a little hard to do with a whole bunch of kids. But maybe you can do some dissection, maybe ditch or something with the public. But that's, yeah, I was like, there's nothing about chickens in there.
Hey, Jason, since you had come here, can you give us a quick update?
Thank you, sir.
Can you give us a quick update on the Emerald Palace, and the grant we applied for, and where we're at? And, because it sounds like, looks like...
Do we know anything else? No.
I haven't heard, I haven't gotten any, uh, feedback yet.
Okay, so, I have a wonderful lady, as you all know, at the park, that has been spearheading this. If you don't know, this wonderful lady, she's actually, were they your lady? She was one of the original ladies that built our Emerald Palace and that coordinated all this, um, along with a couple others. Um, I can't thank her enough for all the work that she did the first time. Now, the second time around, she's like, thinking it on herself to do this all again. I think she would've learned the first time. Uh, we can't blame her, she's wonderful. Um, we just applied with the city, Lori and Ashley at my department, and I and Denise all worked very hard, got all this information together, and we applied to...
We applied to it for a couple of grants.
Yeah, for a couple of grants. Uh, and we sent all the information in, we're hoping to hear back pretty soon for this.
If it doesn't work out, we'll be applying for other ones.
Yeah, if it doesn't work out, we're gonna apply for the others. But I will say, at the park director, we are not peddling this. We're not replacing it, we're rejuvenating. And I don't think it needs to be taken down, and there was such outrage about taking it down. And I was just as outraged, because I had to be here. I might have left, you know, Leslie Hanson, who was on the park order a little years ago. I was employed in crack issues.
Oh, that's right.
During that time. And instead of going to work that week, Leslie made me go to park and slop around in the mud. And it was awful, I can tell you how bad it was. So, there's no way on earth, I'm gonna be like, yes, we have to cut that down, from all the work they put in, so I'm excited to do it again. We have a preliminary build day, if we, there are funds, we have a preliminary build day this fall, to go in there and do this. Anything else? Yeah?
Um, we are working with the city as our funding agent. Thank you very much, Jason, Ashley, have been amazing to work with. If, the playground is going to get, uh, revamping. Some things will be removed, and then there're gonna be some really fun things added. We're really excited about crawling, and crawling in, and under, and on, and there're gonna be some climbing components. Uh, we went to look at Bainburg, Brownsburg. They built their playground about two months before we did twenty-four years ago. They've just been through this regeneration cycle on their playground. And it was great for us, because I'm, you know, taking pictures and sending it back to Jason, and we're looking at, you know, do we replace the picket posts? Because ours, some of ours are wearing, some of them look great. So, we got a preview of what the new PVC ones look like, that are, um, one color on the outside, it'll be etched the name is a different color on the inside. The, the top of the turrets will, um, the wood will be removed, and a lighter weight PVC colors will be put up on there, which takes weight off the structure, which helps it survive a little bit longer.
It's a little bit of structure.
We're hoping, we're hoping, hoping, hoping that, um, there's some surfaces, the wood, uh, chip ground cover is gonna have to come out. Um, about two or three things, we would like to have it go in. There's one that we would really like to have go in. Unfortunately, it's...
Very expensive.
Very, it could add forty-five thousand dollars to the cost. But, you know, we may have another out there. So, we're not cutting ourselves short, that's our dream. We have a, uh, we have plan A, that would be the dream, plan B. Um, but it's, we're excited. I'm excited that it's, we're calling it Emerald Palace two point O. We have a Facebook page, it's Emerald Palace two point O. I've been posting some pictures, I got a lot of interest. People telling me they wanna buy their components again. We probably will be reselling picket fences, posts again. Um, kind of the philosophy is, you made an investment twenty-four years ago, when you bought a piece of equipment, or you bought a picket fence post. You've got twenty-four years worth of investment. We want you to invest again in the next fifteen years, so, uh, we're excited.
I'm very excited.
I'm very excited, yeah.
We're doing Lori and Tamer and, uh, I don't know about Lori. But, but to have, to have this project, you know, because I was a teenager, I was in high school the first time we did this. Now, I have all, kids that are almost the same age as I was when I was in high school. My kids are just two years younger now. And they've loved it, you know, from the time my kids were little, they've always been there, they've always played with it. And I even had my teenage, my eighteen, or seventeen-year-old, the last time he was at the park, was in there playing, so...
And I think fundraising, you know, it's funny, I look back at the records, we raised a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the last, for Emerald Palace one. And ten thousand for that, and in the maintenance fund. And I remember how stressed I was for months. How are we gonna raise a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars? Well, we had a temporary, um, estimate on this one will be about two-ten. And it doesn't even bother me, because I've got so many people already saying to me, I wanna buy a component, I wanna be a part of this, we wanna donate to this. As, you know, the foundation has reached out to me, the foundation has reached out to us. And this is just, I think, where you begin to hate, because it's a gnome. It's such a wonderful part of our community, and we wanted to continue for another fifteen years, so, anyway. Thank you.
I can tell you, I'm really excited. I, I'm probably with confidence, top five percent, uh, in the room of users of the Emerald Palace. And, uh, I'm pumped, and I'm sure my son will be too.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jason.
There were problems, Jason, I talked about moving arrangement, and then with...
Anything else for any of the other departments? You guys are pretty good. Okay, next item on the agenda is mayor's report, so I've got a couple things. So, a couple important dates here for everybody to put down here. First one is February the twenty-four. At five-thirty, I'm gonna say, because I got a different time than what I think I published. Uh, there is a end-up public meeting at the fairgrounds at five-thirty. Uh, I think it said, you can get in at five-thirty, at six, and then my information said you can come at five, and go at five, and the meeting was at five-thirty. So, I think five-thirty's probably a pretty safe time to be out at the end-up meeting.
What was the date again?
February twenty-four.
February twenty-four.
When's the date?
Um, then another exciting, uh, event that's happening in Greencastle is March the first. We will have, um, the ribbon cutting for the opening of the new YMCA. Uh, that will be at around ten o'clock. Uh, that's going to take place at the YMCA, so we're super excited about that. And then it will open on March the third. So, um, exciting times. Um, I'm planning on, and I'm hoping our live streaming video will be working, but, um, it's a requirement of the mayor to give the state of a city address. So, I'm planning on doing that here at City Hall, City Hall, on March the third, at seven o'clock. So, anybody's welcome to come here, but I am also, um, am going to, hopefully that's up and streaming, so everybody can watch that from the Comfort River home. So, that will be on March the third. And then, um, today, I got to spend the day up at, um, the State House. A, a group that we're all involved in, um, had all of the mayors and the cities show up at, uh, we had a, a short meeting over at the Webster's, and then we all went over to the State House. Uh, of course, the main topic of this conversation was, um, this property tax debate. And, uh, I will tell you that it's, it's kind of coming along. The, the bill has been revised, or revised quite a bit from where it started. Um, if it passed today the way it is, we would lose some money, but not as much as, um, it was originally stated. Uh, but there's a lot of work that's gonna go into that yet, so I'm not sure how that's all gonna fall out. But, um, I've talked to our, our senators and our, um, and Bo Eard, our House representative. Uh, in fact, he's gonna come and meet with myself and Todd Barton, and the mayor of Prophetsville, uh, in between the sessions, so we can really have a very serious conversation with that. And then there's been lots of letters sent out, uh, from myself and other mayors about the effects that it will have on our city, so, um, yeah, so that was there. Do you guys have any questions about that?
It's a fine line. Escalating property taxes have an effect on the city too, and the folks are paying. So, you know, I, I don't fault them for looking into, you know, some kind, some kind of degree. On the other hand, you know, the, they can't bank, but the citizens either. So, it is, it's a fine line. What I didn't like with the revision was they added complexity to it. Well, we're gonna do this over here, and we're gonna do this over here. Well, don't do that, you know, keep it clean. Just keep it so that, you know, we're able to fund ourselves, and if, and if we go crazy, if we go beyond what we should be doing, then there's an election every four years, you know? And, uh, so that, that would be my message to the...
Yeah, everything proposed is pretty, um, nothing straightforward. There's a twist in the charm, and a this, and a factor in that. So, um, I actually feel, you know, sorry for the, uh, the auditors in the LGF who have to work through all of this and come up with what everybody's tax records are. It's not, it's not straightforward, nothing straightforward, so... But, um, it's been worked through, and, um, hopefully everybody can kind of come to a, so... I think that's everything I have. And March, sorry for the auditors, I'm gonna write that down.
Oh, how did cable burn? I feel sorry for the portrait. Um, you all should feel sorry for the portrait.
Actually, you got cable burned.
Yes, this is our, our busy time of year, um, but things are going well. Um, I just happen to give you these things, um, my staff, that help them happen. Um, it goes without saying, still, they're working tonight as well. Um, so, yeah, it's coming along, it's been long, but, I'll wait. I'll look ready, it's on, it's on.
Oh.
That makes sense.
Sure. Uh, first, I wanna, I wanna thank you, Mayor Dunbar, for the work you're doing on, on SB one. Uh, it really scares me, and, uh, you know, I think I checked, it's roughly like four hundred thousand in the third year we lose right now, as it's written, and... We all know up here, we don't know where we'd be able to cut that from, so that, that terrifies me. Uh, but on brighter news, I was in the neighborhood of the YMCA and popped my head in, and, uh, was given a, a brief tour, and I am so excited. I've seen the pictures, I've seen the mockups. It doesn't, you have to see it, so, uh, the ribbon cutting's gonna be so exciting. Um, signing up, uh, pretty shortly. shortly. I failed to ask anyone last month about the status of bank shot basketball, and that's on me, but we received bank shot basketball last month, and when it gets warm enough, it'll be installed, so that's really exciting, I cannot wait for that, and I'm wishing for warm weather, and the last thing, we haven't met yet on the Economic Development Center, but I did email staff at the center and the foundation, and jointly, on behalf of the organization, I did apply for a forty thousand dollar childhood development grant, we haven't heard back yet, but it will help fund some of the work that the community foundation's doing on identifying ways to improve our childhood, access to childcare and whatnot, so I'll keep everyone posted on that, but that was perfect timing with me getting on the board and that grant deadline, but that's it.
I drove down Madison Street yesterday, I talked to Andrew about it last year, because we're, we're hearing about it, and I think there are six guys in the street, there is one by the interest of the home park, what Andrew said was actually on a contractor, but it doesn't matter, because once that detour comes, you know, we can't have those holes, just fill a little bit of gravel.
As soon as they can get.
Get warm weather, but I just want, and I know that's going to be on your radar screen, but I just wanted to know, when water leaks always happens on this.
Yeah, he has a whole rest of, they've been putting out some cold patch throughout the city, but it doesn't last anytime at all, so.
It's got to be a hot patch.
It's got a hot patch, and as soon as he can get it, they'll have it, they'll have it.
Just wanted to keep that, keep that on the screen.
There's also a couple other spots there that he's fixing, but he had to wait until the end-up representatives came out, because they will reimburse us for this, so.
Just one quick thing, January, February, and March are legislators or locally elected state legislators come to Putnam County, and Farm Bureau hosts a sit-down with them, the next one is Saturday at nine AM, Farm Bureau on Jackson Street, it's open to the public, every time I go I learn things, they talk about education, they talk about bills that are coming, they talk about all kinds of things, and it's just great to hear the folks that represent us there, take on it, and how how they're feeling about the different issues, so if you're free Saturday, nine AM, we have amazing sweet rolls, so.
I will second all of that.
Yeah, one of those guys, it's a president protest with the Senate, too.
I know, so it's it's great.
It's a good one to talk to.
I don't have much, but I do attend the committee committee meeting, and I just want the city to know how busy they are constantly, and there are going to be lots of training coming up, I'm so proud of them, and I'm trying to put that out there to the universe, how hard they work, also, I am on the sustainability committee here for the state, and if anybody would like to be involved, always have learned from more people, if you want to be a part of maybe that's the beginning of the place, we'd love to have, so just let me know if you want to be in that.
Just I want to thank you for getting the sewer line installed out of the Hudson Drive, I realize it's more than work, working on Hudson.
That will be finished, the sewer line will be finished about middle to end of April, the whole thing, and then we hope it's warm enough, and they can pay that.
Okay.
So J Mar and Hudson will get it done, and we'll be working on the other main road out there.
Okay.
Better, it'll get paid also.
Yeah, the new payment is somewhat temporary, or whatever, a band-aid fix for all the model, which I appreciate, I think, with the rest of it, along with the very, with the car, car.
Yep, we'll be new, we'll be new areas going up at the same time, we'll go up the road and ask.
So I just want to thank you, progress we've made on that, looking forward to hopefully by the end of June, or if you consider having a new record.
Okay.
And then I've had my first park board meeting, which was kind of fun, because I was originally on the park board when I first started up back in the nineties, just to be back on there again, and we had our first meeting here at City Hall back about a week ago, so.
Everybody's got one of these, just a couple points of interest, most of you, or many of you may not know, all the West Central Solid Waste District is involved in, I would like to point out two, three different things, the front, the front has a list of all the people that are part of the body of the West Central Solid Waste District, but I think of of interest is in the parentheses right there under Board of Directors, you'll notice it says Putnam County Population thirty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-six, Park County sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-six, that, those two numbers are the basis for their funding from the two counties, the two counties that they collect, for their business is based on those two numbers, and if you turn on the back, you will see what those numbers translate to as far as budgets are concerned, the one box that's circle that's squared in blue has the rundown for the expenses and income, et cetera, for twenty-twenty-four, and I think most of you probably have, over the course of the year, perhaps, taken some solid, some yard waste to the center, that income also come, becomes part of the budget of the West Central Solid Waste District. And I have one other thing, but I would save it for the end of the meeting.
Oh, of course.
Well, yeah, it will be.
Okay, so the next item.
Sitting in the chair, on the edge of the chair.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of amendments for January ninth of twenty-twenty-five.
I have one correction on a name, and that is, you have Dave Kinney, and the only reason I know this, because it looks like it's more to my knees, but it's G U I N E E, I'm going to think any, but it rhymes, so.
It's what I thought.
Do we have a motion?
Second. Would that one change?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, aren't they, or say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of claims.
Okay, so I reviewed the claims, and we have a total for direct payables, six hundred and fifty-four thousand eight fifty-five thirty-eight, regular payables, one hundred eighty-four thousand two sixty-nine oh six, payroll of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand six oh nine thirty-seven, and payroll pensions, twenty-one six twenty-four ninety-three for rental, one hundred and eighty-eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, on the direct payables, we have claims to name, we met that earlier, we've got the air popper to nineteen, but also twenty-five or dues for two thousand twenty-five, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the whole plan, fifty-nine oh seven, we've got comprehensive plan for our pool in December, we have a bill for A, not every, A and S, A and structure point, and that totals thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars for redoing a comprehensive plan for the fourth quarter of twenty-four, we've got our monthly remove filter system of the pool, replacement of that, twenty thousand two seven three seventy, we've got built up by county limits for our street resourcing in twenty-four, three hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents, I did look at credit card usually, they're pretty, not too much there, but on Linda has twenty-one hundred and forty dollars for holiday decorations, I assume, the park, and a whole three thousand dollars planned there, some of these I had laughed at Kayla, but asked her about some things, because certain people, they hit their their limits, and so then the Kayla would order something for her, or whatever, she had one, her, she had a, no one. I accuse her of taking it home.
That's how we start.
It's actually for the sewer. So, and Melanie had six hundred and seventy-five dollars for fire officer seminar, and that's because.
Well-rounded.
Pardon me?
We try to be a well-rounded.
That's right, and that's because when you get down to, she has nine hundred dollars on there for that same seminar, plus eleven hundred ninety for another seminar, he was hitting the maximum on his credit card, so I do look at the credit card bills, and credit card, this is large, but also, you know, ask questions about it, we got our annual fee to Civic Plus, which is what we get on our computers and everything else, emails, thirty-five hundred and thirty-nine sixty, did a lot of stuff, from a deal up, weans, what have you, lots of Duke Energy bills, and Thermal Energy, works construction for Roman Phase Two for October November, thirteen eight thousand three eighty-four eighty, fishback, it used to be a line, they changed it again, sixty-three sixty-seven fifty for the December, the January, plus three hundred, for most of the three hundred and sixty-five, we've all gone, we went and worked with, we did sixty thousand dollars of development center, which we rolled on last month for our annual support, government brander trash contract, we have a bunch of stuff in there for copier, they did have one that's interesting, they had a payment back to US treasury for a park, for a park bond, thirteen oh seven thirty-six, I think, and so we made excess interest or something on the rest of the money.
Because we earned more interest on our deal bond, and so so many vehicles.
Your tire than what we were paying.
Yeah, so what would be our earnings on that?
I think nine percent of it, I think, well, ten percent of the excess. I don't look at bigger space.
That's your arbitrage, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So, I I was like, what are we paying US treasury besides the payables?
Being good investors.
So, yeah, to good investors, so that's the six hundred and fifty-four thousand eight fifty-five, that's some of the highlights of that, any questions, we'll run it to the right of the table. Okay, I'll try to get through the meeting quickly, we have a taser and camera for a year, software or updates, whatever, I guess, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven set of things to act on and private, the police department, annual support will be on homeless for twenty thousand dollars, got a bunch of roads sold this time, almost sixty thousand up, fifty-seven thousand dollars, the roads sold in the park, Stacy took some from the state council's support and bought a garden shack for the park for fifty-two sixty-five seventy-five, we've got Genius Fire Company, for some fire hoses and fire novels, the novels were part of a grant we received, and that told eleven thousand fifty-four eighty-five twenty oh two, we got a bunch of vehicle, police vehicles, the shoppers, the penny shop, and spent over eleven and a half thousand dollars there, about half that, sixty-one hundred dollars approximately for transition replacement on number five, got a JTN for thirteen thousand eight ninety-one, for a snow plow and spreader on ETV for eight twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars, and throw lights on our new Chevy Silverado for thirteen hundred and twenty dollars, also bought a rubber plowed lake for the street department for twenty-one hundred ninety-six seventy, I mentioned already about the playground design, we have preliminary, preliminary design work, check it out, the park for Levers and Associates for twenty-one hundred dollars, and I think that's about the end, yeah, so that pretty much makes up the hundred eighty-four thousand two sixty-nine oh six for the regular capital. Any questions at all?
Okay.
I'll make a motion, group one.
Second, second, so we have a motion, second, aren't they, or say aye? Anybody opposed or stand?
Stand.
Okay, we're going to move on to old business, so the first item is appointments to the Commission on Sustainability, so I do have three folks that have agreed to do that, unless you guys have have anybody else that that's paying to that, but Vanessa Fox is one of them, Peter Foss, and Joe Ferguson. So, I would entertain a motion, would those be your appointments for the Sustainability Commission?
I'll second.
There we have a motion, second.
Are you, are you in current serving?
Vanessa does.
I thought Vanessa.
Yeah, she does a great job, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash sixteen, and ordinance adopting, adopting and establishing designated outdoor refreshment areas in the city of Greencastle, Indiana. I believe this is second through.
I think we had the motion to to amend, and so we cleaned up some of the language that, so it does include the Elks, and that's really the only change.
I think it's also the, we expanded twice the.
Yeah, before that, verge boots, boots was in the first motion.
Okay, okay.
But since that time, we also made sure that the the narrative included the Elks.
Do we need to make a motion to untable?
Yeah, I think we do.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, second, to untable the ordinance, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, at this point, does somebody want to make a motion, and then we'll make a motion, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash sixteen on a second.
Second.
Then we have a motion, second, so is there any discussion?
I think there might be some public discussion.
Is there anybody in the public?
I would, before they come up, I would just add that, when we met as a committee, it was always the intention to have those two amended locations in, it was an oversight, but they weren't, so I'm really excited to hear from people here today and hopefully pass this.
Anybody have an audience comment? If you do, you'll need to go to the, are you voting on that tonight or not?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we have a motion, second on the floor, so we will vote on it tonight, and if it passes tonight, it will pass.
I have some comments.
Okay, so you'll, and you go to the podium, say your name.
Ron Bitman, and I've talked to people on the board and council here, can you hear me? No, I couldn't hear some of you people, I'm old, my wife must be ahead of hearing aid, I haven't, she's got one, she can hear it by the room, so be careful when you say that. So, anyway, I don't know all the ins and outs of this, I would hope that you would give this some more consideration before you lock the door on it, I don't think it's going to benefit the people that's watching this, I don't like the idea of drinks walking around in the streets, splashing all over me, I don't like that, they stink, they're offensive, there's places I don't go because of that, and I think there's a liability issues there, they're deep, I've got people, I can name them, they're sitting in jail now because they were drinking and driving and kill people, I notice, and that concerns me living in this town, if we allow this to happen, if some, if that had happened, if they could come back on the city because we didn't, don't have to do that, I was told we had good insurance, but someone got, loses their life, insurance ain't going back, I don't think, we're supposed to have limited, limit what people can do, how are you going to monitor that, and if you monitor it, who's going to do that, and what's the cost, and who's going to pay that cost? And who's going to pay that cost? I think you just keep looking at things, and I know there's some other towns, it's already approved it, but also know some that are kind of holding back on it, so it get more, you want some more evidence. And I, I don't have a vote here. But I do have a vote for my daughter, so I spend it. So, and I don't think it's going to help the bottom line of these people. And I think that's what they're concerned about, the bottom line, rather than maybe people having a good time.
Anybody else? Anybody else have comments?
Meyer, Morris Bar. You guys, I was here before for the first discussion. I am totally for this. For the past year, we, we dealt with construction. Every single business downtown is hurting. Hurting. I can show you numbers. This adds to it because it draws people downtown. The insurance is on the institutions. The controls are on the businesses. We determine who walks out the door with a drink in their hand. That's part of our job. I truly think this is a benefit to the city of Greencastle who needs more business downtown, who needs more foot traffic downtown. And that's what it comes down to. And I go back to the old one that I always say, there is no open container law in Greencastle, Indiana. So you can do it now. This is just controlling. And that's what I think we need to look at. So I'm all for it, and I know a lot of other people are all for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyhow?
There is an open, I'll say this again, there is an open container law about in vehicles.
Just not walk.
Right, but, but there also was regarding public intoxication.
Okay.
Well, I think that we've, we've worked this over pretty well. I think we've proved it down to the point where it's much better than where it started. And I'm pretty happy with it. It's a benefit. Also, one of the other things I was unaware of, especially on the first writing, that there's also a violation of alcohol and beverage E.B.C. laws.
That's what I want to hear again. Pete explained that really good last time, I didn't realize that. And that was meaning like if I went to Gail's and got a drink, I wasn't allowed to get out of your area to go over to Pete's, right? Is that what that was? Yeah. You have to do it in a.
Every single part, every place.
So now this opens it up to it covers the whole Dora area, and you don't have to be put in that little box as.
Correct. Excise doesn't look at the, the open container law in Greencastle. Excise looks at the floor plans that we put out.
That's it.
So if somebody was drinking on Indiana Street in front of the Morris Bar at our Beer Garden, they technically by excise cannot walk across Washington with their beer.
And this allows them to be able to do that?
This allows them.
In the Dora area only, okay.
Famously, they would have to guzzle their beer before they will walk across the street.
Right, that's why I was.
They probably couldn't even walk across the street.
Which isn't good, which isn't good. No, which is not what you want. I'm a sipper anyway, I like to say.
That's our floor plan.
Is it still open for?
Yeah, go ahead. You got to cut in the podium.
My name's Joel Harrison, and local resident. My wife, Tasha, I own the Wisk, and also the Vegas, a local business owner downtown. So a couple of things I just want to mention, this had the opportunity when this was, I guess it'd be two months ago, before council shared a little bit. Certainly don't expect you all to hear me here and all, again, my church has to have that every Sunday. So I think the thing that I would like to just make them to know is that it's been really interesting for me over the last two months to talk to people in the community and just ask them what their thoughts were. And I thought that was a good chance to hear what people's kind of understanding of it was, what they thought, how would it impact them? I'd had the opportunity prior to that to kind of talk to local downtown businesses, and I felt like we had a really good showing of not just local bars and restaurants, but also shops, retail shops, and how that would have positive impact on them last time. So we don't need to mention that, but it is worth being aware of. The thing was really interesting last, over the last couple of months is, is I think I was really surprised by how many people with families raising children that were so positive. All I, I, out of every couple of I spoke to, I did not have one family raising children who thought negatively about this. However, I did have folks who maybe did not have young children they're raising, who were opposed to it, and their primary objection was because Greencastle is supposed to be a downtown, it's family friendly. And I just think that's interesting, because as somebody that doesn't have kids, one of the things I learned a long time ago is the best people to listen to about how to raise kids is people who raise kids. And so I think that's something worthwhile, and I think that this was, the ordinance was actually drafted by to-be-bought council who were raising kids. I think that's worthwhile to think about when they say the impact not just on our local economy now, but as we're developing a downtown community, people want to visit for generations to come, their kids will want to live in for generations to come. So I, I just thought it was worthwhile to say that the, the, all of the families that I've talked to, and I understand that's antithetical, was all very positive. And everybody that I've talked to that had concerns, as we talked about, what Pete just mentioned, this is about putting guardrails and safety so that those types of things that Mr. Pittman mentioned don't happen. Nobody wants these tragedies to occur, nobody is in any way encouraging irresponsibility. The idea of somebody guzzling the beer before they leave an establishment so that they can get to somewhere else is what causes irresponsibility. It actually causes harm, so we're trying to move away from that. So the idea is not people being less responsible, it's more responsible. So we can protect our businesses, encourage traffic downtown, and keep our families safe for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call for the question.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. So I think in this case, I think it makes sense to do a roll call. So on the cable, we'll call it a roll, and you will give your vote, okay? Just be clear with that, my name.
Councilor Deary?
Yes.
Councilor Nicholson?
Yes.
Councilor Mastin?
No.
Councilor Langdon?
No.
Councilor Asbell? Councilor Gimmer?
Yes.
And Councilor Thomas?
No.
We're in a break, so the ordinance passes. Okay, so we will have a start of the process for having a door downtown. Thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you all.
So we've got several items on the new business here. So the first item here is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one, and ordinance permitting, amending section eight dash twenty-six of the Greencastle City Code regarding limited parking zones.
I'm, I'm sorry I did this all in separate ones, but it makes it much easier to track for code changes throughout time if we don't put them all under one.
I, I appreciate it.
So limited parking is the first one. This just addresses the taking back the changes. Oh, this is the one that says that we will keep it at three hours. For now. Now, the mayor is, is looking into, has a whole parking committee for downtown and is looking into, to ways we can make the whole situation better for parking downtown. But in the interim, it seems to be working well with the three-hour parking. And, and we've got more construction coming in this next year.
At least this time, we'll be on the square.
Well, it'll be on the side. On the north side, or the west side.
It's on the west side.
Well, yeah.
And that's still, that's some of those.
West side of the square, except for the.
Right, not the Duke's, they're still working to be done, and it's going to cause, you know, some disturbance. With that, she said that it was on February nineteenth, businesses downtown have been notified that we're having a parking meeting where the businesses can come in and talk about how parking downtown affects them. So we will be having that. So we're going to take all that in and kind of goes, you know, how it affects a restaurant doesn't necessarily how it affects the hair salon and, and the restaurants downtown. So those are just kind of some things that we would like to hear from businesses. So that's going to happen next week, and we'll keep kind of working on parking downtown.
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one on first reading.
Okay, that's a guy with a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Oppose.
Okay.
Oppose.
Okay, the next item is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two. An ordinance amending section eight dash twenty-two of the Greencastle City Code regarding no parking zones.
As far as the construction, we made a change to our former ordinance, saying that there was no parking on along Franklin, Franklin Street, except where there were the parking bays. There was some interest in changing, in making that a permanent change. The, the previous ordinance expires at the end of the construction. So this is, this is what I was requested to draft.
Make it permanent.
Okay, so I will entertain, entertain a motion, a second on this, and then we'll open this one up for public discussion.
So who?
Okay, so does anybody have any thing they want to say about this?
I do.
Okay.
I think I.
Like, I have to state your name, you know.
I'm Trudy Sylvia. I spend probably the most time on Channel Three as anyone here. I said my days at twenty-three West, and my nights at four-twenty-three East Franklin. I didn't show up when we did this for the temporary, because I thought it was probably the good thing. I see the construction and saw the floor, and I sent an email to the mayor to forward to everybody, so I would be as free as possible tonight. But I, again, studied the parking for my own home. Not only the parking, but the increase in traffic. We turn off our cameras in front of our house at night because of all of the semis that still roll up and down Franklin Street even after the construction's been over with. So as much as I adjust that, it's at least, I would say, eight to ten per night still are using Franklin Street as a bypass instead of going over to Long Creek Town Street because of the fast, fast and they're speeding down there. Just this, in the last forty-eight hours, I was rear-ended turning into my driveway. Yet again, that is on absolutely every week, probably every day. We start slowing down and turning our curb signals on at the boulevard to turn and we're going west, and at City Hall when we're going east, just because people are speeding so quickly. It's too wide if you're going to keep it as no parking. I know it's a pain to slow down and to pay attention to go around cars parked there. Pay attention when you're driving, slow down when you're driving. On the other thing, social parking there, all summer when people are having their brass fed. The mower people were parked there, the lot with their, dropping their trailer, put their blinkers on there several hours. Social service, UPS, Amazon, all of them do it. But yeah, I can't park in front of my house down the line of groceries. We have probably one of the largest driveways on Franklin Street, and I'm just thinking, can I hold Christmas? Because if not, to park in the driveway, my mom might have to park on Paradise or City Hall and walk to my house, or have to pick them up somewhere else. So again, there are other places in Greencastle that are more narrow that have parking, that's one, for example. You know, I was contacted by Mr. Mastin, my boss on this, prior to him being for it, and I luckily read it from Eric's article last month, so I knew to be here this month. Again, I signed up for Greg and I, we both feel the same way about this. We want to get a little parking from our house that's likely done for the past thirty-four years. Thank you.
I'd like to make a few points on that, I agree one hundred percent. I've said this last year when we voted on it being temporary, I said this last month. We had another resident last month share those same concerns. Started in two thousand and twenty-two, I wrote a letter to an editor about Franklin Street. It's unsafe when you leave it open. Statistically, cars drive faster when you leave it open. In a few moments, we'll talk about Anderson Street and one of the things we're doing to narrow it to make it safer. It's, it's just, all the stats point to wide lanes, no disruptions. Disruptions equal fast cars, fast cars equal death. And we're lucky it hasn't happened recently in, in our community, but I'm really worried about making this permanent. And if we are going to make it no parking, there has to be some kind of pinch point or disruption like we're doing on Anderson, but I think we should just leave the parking.
I have something to add, so I've lived in town for thirty-one years, and I do remember Franklin did not always be parked on, either no you could. I, I worked at Abstract and Title, I drove it almost every day for twenty and a half years. There wasn't always parking there. I mean, there is, but I mean, people didn't park on the street. And I think the reason was because when you park and you meet a car, to me, that is more dangerous than not having parking. I mean, it narrows the road, I don't, it's what, twenty-six feet?
It's twenty-six.
It's twenty-six feet. Washington, which has parking, I believe is between thirty-one and thirty-two feet. That makes sense to have parking in a two-way. I just don't think Franklin needs to have parking. I think it's more dangerous when you're meeting up on that truck or car. And I do know there was just years that went by that no one parked on that road, even though you could. That's, that's my opinion.
I'd like to add, though, if, if someone driving is not paying enough attention and they hit a vehicle.
Which has happened. I think there are some vehicles that were parked there that did get hit.
That same person would have hit anything or anyone, so that vehicle is protecting them from going off the road and hitting a pedestrian, hitting a pedestrian crossing a street.
If you want to use that argument, then that's every street in town.
Yes.
And even the ones that don't have sidewalks.
I witnessed that from my house, the one right there. That car was speeding.
Yes.
In excess of fifty mile an hour.
That can happen anywhere, though, is what I'm saying. So parking or not parking, that's not going to take that away.
That, it does, though. Every study possible.
I'm not going to argue about it, I gave my opinion, just like you gave yours, and you gave yours, so.
I gave research.
I'm trying to recall, two months ago when we first talked about this, wasn't there also a discussion about sidewalks and how the sidewalks were too close to the street?
Yeah.
Because when I go down Franklin, I always see people walking. I see kids pushing stroller, I mean, families pushing strollers, I see runners. So my thought is, I'm more worried about protecting the people on the sidewalks than I am, you know, about protecting the cars. And if, if cars parked will protect the pedestrians, then I think it's worth thinking about, you know, maybe that's the, the more important issue to discuss. I just, when I go down Franklin, I always notice people walking.
And I know that was brought up, and I happened to notice, going for Danville, you go east of downtown, cross from where the old school is, it's the courthouse annex now, sidewalk right beside U.S. thirty-six. And they paint indy, it's painted a yellow line or a white line right along the.
That's what we discussed last month to do.
Before, you know, before it occurred, and everything else. The, the, and it's like, hey, pay attention, does that white line continue? No, it doesn't, once that, once that. white line continue? No, it doesn't. Once that, once that sidewalk moves, either stops or moves away from the pavement, then the white line will walk. I think that, that kind of indicates to the driver, don't get so close to the curb. And I think if we do pass this, we need to, one, put a lot of signs and say to park or paint curb yellow or bold and weighted for it. So the people that are holding grass, they're with that. They shouldn't be parked. They can find somewhere else to park.
To your point on Danville, there's a term that's pretty popular called tactical urbanism. And it's really just putting cost-effective things in areas to direct traffic. So, you know, white lines are one-way, bollards every six feet could be one-way, a planter along the curb, just to narrow the road by, you know, two or three feet could be one-way. So there's a lot of ways to do it other than parking, but parking is just a really easy way because you just say, go ahead and park, and the cars protect people for you. But there are a lot of, a lot of effective ways to do it for really a couple hundred dollars.
Can I just ask this? Trudy, do you just need more parking degrees from your house?
It doesn't, and we don't park there all the time.
But I'm just saying, if.
It depends.
Okay, so if we, if we marked where we would put, I think sometimes what happens is you have a lot of people coming down and you might have, you know, where, where we have two or three people lined up along the way parking, but then it gets really tight. But if you've got one, you can kind of, you know, people are a little more patient with one, so.
But there's trailer, there's trailers up here, too.
I know. And that gets the problem is that, so what I was going to suggest was possibly, so we wouldn't get big trailers and big things parking, that we would put specific parking spots in front of key places along Franklin Street. And then, I think it's in Danville, don't they have the, the white paintings on the road that kind of narrows the street? Kind of like we would do imaginary bump outs, but.
I think my concern with that would be just that if, if I'm driving, I ride every day, and I know people don't park there, I'm looking for that, where it is occasionally and there's, this is parking, this is not parking, that is the consistency of driving.
I was going to say, it's either parking or not parking.
But then your neighbor's going to come on and say, well, I do have what I want.
Right, exactly.
Well, I think you could, I think you could put it down there, that you wouldn't have them just, all of a sudden, you have all these cars just lined up the street. You'd have one in front of her house, maybe one in this house, and another house. And in between that, you'd have the white, white areas that were kind of packed as the bump out.
You could also limit the width of the vehicle that's allowed.
Yeah, then it's going to pick up, correct, with the trailer parked there.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, you could, you could have so many, so many feet, so many wide, yeah, that's a possibility. So you don't have the visual impairment you can see around them.
The real problem.
That gets to be a real problem.
Yeah.
It would have to be signed and clear. But we have, we have wait warrants.
I think the line from, to move it away from the sidewalk is the best scenario, but I'm only one.
Yeah, we have a motion, second on this. Is there any, put a stop sign somewhere?
Right there.
So at least, I mean, it's, it's not very practical, but it would.
Stop signs are supposed, are required to be warranted by engineers, an engineer to study.
We randomly add them sometimes.
Oh, you do. You do.
I take that idea back.
We've got an ordinance because of the stop signs. Now, Dave and I rolled up, I remember when there was a stop sign here.
Yeah.
Oh, Franklin's at, at Norfolk Boulevard. And for some strange reason, Locust Street had the right of way.
And Durham, over the hill.
Norfolk Boulevard had the right of way.
So much more dangerous.
This probably is the hospital.
Yeah. Probably was. But I think it also makes it slow down traffic. But, you know, there's not enough cross traffic, there's more on stop sign.
I think it was inheritance from the horse and buggy days.
They might remember that.
I do. That was there.
Am I ready to do that? Okay. Shall we, do we need to do a recall on this one?
Probably.
Before we do a recall, I confirm this is allowed. I'd like to make a motion to table and maybe have some drawings like we do on Anderson Street as options.
From the city engineer.
I'd like to second that because I don't know how I feel, but I want, you know, I think if you and Daryl just said the same thing and, you know.
We can, I can reach out to our city engineer like we did on our next Anderson Street one coming up down the road here. So, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to table, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two. So on your side.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
So everything will remain like it is.
Everything will continue to remain, there will still be no park, well, yes, right, or is it still no parking?
That's technically what I.
Okay, so it's still no parking. I will reach out to our city engineer tomorrow and I will tell him and then we will, I will talk to him about that. I will tell you that.
The structure's still continuing.
City engineer's still continuing.
So technically.
You know, so to some extent, we are, we're, we're, because we dragged and complained about semis driving up and down that street when they weren't exposed to. And we accepted it to some extent. And now they can't change, or they won't change.
They won't change.
They won't change. Yeah, they won't change.
I was not aware of that.
They still drive.
Oh, yeah. They do all the time.
Why?
All day, all night.
Why? You got to watch this street this.
Because.
I know.
Because we've left it wide open for them.
Because there aren't any stoplights.
There are no stop signs or no stoplights.
There's no ticketing.
Yeah, Franklin's a thoroughfare because there's no stop sign, there's no stoplight.
If we physically disrupt.
There's no stop signs on Franklin?
Not until you get all the way.
Four stop signs by.
From there to there, yeah.
Right. I'm just saying, they're, they come that way because.
I mean, if I was a semi driver and I go, and I turn off on Franklin Street and Jackson Street.
I'm nuts.
Yeah, I'm a semi driver.
I know they were doing it like that when the Washington was closed.
So I'm going to, I'm going to reach out and I will get, I will have hopefully some pretty draw, I will have some pretty drawings for you guys next one, like we do on the next one. So the next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three, ordinance amending section eight dash fifteen of the Green Castle City Code regarding one-way streets. So during the construction to kind of ease traffic a little bit, we took Anderson Street as one-way or two-way up to Arlington Street. Well, we, we had a meeting and we heard from a lot of folks last week. And so one of our counselors came up with this suggestion, and I reached out to our city engineer who put this together for us and said, yes, this would work. So it's actually making Anderson Street two-way up until past the entrance of the Miller School exit. That kind of tells you where the signage will be, plus that white piece out there will be in the, drawn in the road. Okay, so that will be out there with the items. So there'll be a stop sign, it'll be two-way, and then the rest of Anderson Street will go on down one-way. So one thing that it does do is there's about thirty-some people that do live at Miller Raspberry, that they will have the option, right there, they will have the option to just turn out and go, and it will keep them from, in most cases, turning right and traveling down the street. So, you know, there possibly could be most of this very less people that would not be going down that street. And so we would put signage out there, and there'll be a sign facing, you know, towards the ondev, which is the beginning one-way, and then there'll be also a signage right there that shows that that begins one-way. So there shouldn't be any confusion, the stop sign. And so there'll be a beginning one-way down there also that points the right, he's got the wrong direction.
Or it's because it will be facing that way, so you have to turn side to side, right? So it'll be facing the right way.
Right, it will be.
It's kind of confusing.
And then in the conversation, we also talked about making, possibly putting a stop sign down in the, around by the park entrance. So he kind of drew up where he thought the crosswalk needed to be on Anderson Street. Now, this is not in this resolution, but this is just, I know we've got a couple of people here from Anderson Street who are thinking about, is that, that corner, one that's ADA compliant down the corner of Arlington Street, it kind of really kind of goes to nowhere when it, because it doesn't line up directly with the park entrance. So in our next sidewalk phase construction, we have is that, if we would actually, if we have the right of way in front of it, we would add a crosswalk, we would add an ADA compliant ramp that would go then directly across to the, the park entrance, and we would probably mark it pretty there. And then at that point, we would also put a do not enter sign on by their oncoming, so there's no confusion to turn right, because there's currently not one there. And then there would be, we could, it would kind of make sense once there's a crosswalk, even though we know a crosswalk, we should stop that. We may or may not be able to, or should add a stop sign, but I guess we could discuss it because it's not.
Way near from the engineering.
Yeah. And so, and then there would be the pedestrian crosswalk sign and all that, and you can see where he has those. And then there would also be the one-way street sign where currently there is one today that points the one-way street down. So, so that was kind of, I think, hopefully, folks on Anderson Street like that addition to that crosswalk that leads into the park. Now, I know it doesn't solve the problem of Arlington Street further, but that's something we're going to address in community policy.
So this portion of Anderson Street right now is two-way.
Right now it is.
Yes. Something worse than the actual line, that will, that, that is two-way all the way up. It will be still two-way from the Miller Raspberry driveway. That would be it. So I think, I think this gets everybody, the Miller Raspberry people, gets them what they were looking for, and it gets the Anderson Street residents what they were looking for in one-way. Can we go back to the other one for quickly? All right.
No, no. We're going to pick out of the box.
So there's only one, one driveway here. That's, but they, I start, this is all no parking up to this point anyway. I did notice that there are about two spots right in here somewhere next to the Bloomingdale Street Hall, about size of two spots are, are not paved yellow. We'll probably address that a few years. But I've never seen it been parked.
No, I don't.
I mean, the Bloomingdale Street Hall has been parked a lot.
Perhaps we should, we think it was parked.
I, I, I've actually, yeah, so two vehicles on that one week. So that's, that was the only thing. The rest of it's all no parking. It's wide enough for two-way traffic, it's serving two-way traffic. It doesn't affect any of the residents, even this resident, residents here has parking here. And, and really, there's not a lot of people parking there, but I've been able to see it until about more than that matching. So, anyway, I think this is a good solution to, that this, this issue.
I do, too. I think so. Both, the Miller Raspberry residents and folks on Anderson Street who, I don't want my street goes longer.
Yeah.
I've shown it to a few people. They all, on Anderson, they all really liked it. Their only comment was to just really make sure we clearly label on Wood Street and on Arlington, however, whatever that takes, make sure it's obvious that it's one-way.
Yeah. And again, Vince's comments have been made earlier. We've got signs here and here, right in the street, that they're saying, again, one-way if you're heading eastbound, and as you're, another sign pointing, again, one-way, again, one-way. So, you know, that's blocking that, which probably will make, make it till we lose about a half parking block of that area. Again, I don't think there's, there even there in that area.
Well, the other thing that's going to kind of keep people from coming up the other way now that this slip up through there, because now you got to get around, you know, the, the buckwell, the parking.
The signs.
You know, I think it's, it's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
On, you had a comment, you know, on that, going from the Hasbury, you know, out two-way, I think it's a very good idea. I drive this transport, eventually for the hospital. I go in and take people up. You've got people in wheelchairs, oxygen, not greatest. And go, I can go out, show the rides, just going out and around. So I think that, that would be great for them people in, effectively, occasionally. Yeah, but no.
I think for ambulance.
Ambulance person, but, you know, they can fill in regularly. I just get people in and out, put them to the hospital, so.
And we'll have to, the double yellow lines, which will designate the driveways. So I think it's, I, I think having this for Franklin Street will be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, this is probably, of all the things we've worked on last year, what excites me the most. We heard public input, we kind of came up with ideas, we have a really cool solution. I think this was just a really good example, government doing good. So I'm excited.
So thank you, Mark, for coming up with that.
Yeah, thinking out of the box.
So that pinch area, is that just drawn on with paint or is it a physical barrier?
Right now, the pinch area will be put on with the reflective tape.
Okay.
And then there will be the signage put in the pinch area.
Okay. Oh, and within that. Okay, so people can, okay.
So you can't go.
You can't really drive over that because you're going to damage your car.
And I'm sure the post will have probably a reflector on it there, but somebody's coming the wrong way.
And then really hard work.
For someone that lives on Anderson Street, I think that that's a really good compromise. It gives us the one-way that goes down towards the park and the residence because some people don't have a driveway.
Yeah.
Or a shared driveway. I know during a winter storm, we had six cars that got backed up into the shared driveway while they were trying to dig each other out of there, trying to do the ordinance of being off the road and all that, which helps get the road clear. But this will help slow that traffic that we've had trouble with, cars coming up the wrong direction. Two kind of cars that got hit similar to like the Franklin Street entrance, or Franklin Street problems as well. But at the same time, it gives Miller that access to the road. And I'm sure Brian and Heather, that's the house that's across from there, they won't care. It's, it's, there's the only driveway that could be allowed to do a single, and that's their driveway that comes up to the two-way. And I'm sure for them, it's just kind of like, well, we know where we're going.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. But everybody else, you know, it's always been one-way. So we were, we were shocked when they were talking about keeping it two-way, like, no, 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 no. But at the same time, I just care for the last minute outside of town. Everybody heard a lot about it. And I think it's, like Vince said, it was a great example. Everybody talking about it, everybody saying what was good, what was bad. And then coming up with the compromise is that I don't see anything wrong with this one at all, at all. I think it'd be a really good thing. We're excited to see it go up.
Yeah, as soon as we can put, well, we have two readings, so we've got to go next month, but then we should, the weather should be nice enough that they could get out of it down. So.
Okay. And you all throw that hard work.
Okay.
I move that we adopt ordinance twenty, twenty-five oh three on the first reading.
I second it.
Here we have a motion, second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or less than?
Retirement's good for you.
Go to Franklin Street next.
Okay, I think we have one more here.
Yep.
And ordinance amending ordinance two thousand dash four of the Green Castle City Code regarding stop sign. So we have four stop signs listed here, College Street. So it says, street sign location, intersecting street with Franklin, number of stop signs is two. Then we have Franklin Street, which is Norfolk Boulevard, is the intersection street, and Durham Street, two over there. Madison Street and Columbia Street, two there. And Hannah Street, midway between Locust and Indiana Street on either side of the crosswalk now. Lori, do you want to, I think you took the phone call from the university about this.
Oh, I thought I took that out.
Oh, it needs to come out.
Hannah Street needs to come out.
Like I say, that's kind of an odd one, you know, there's no street anymore.
Well, they.
That's where Bill College.
I, I, I think, well, I think they're okay with it. They said, I said, do you want it in or do you want it? And well, we can, you know, they were being very amiable, work with us. So I think that they're fine with, they, they're fine with it. In fact, I, some university people had asked me to do that because there is a major crosswalk there where the road was, and they're concerned about the safety of the street.
We've got a really nice rumble script right now.
They do. There is.
And my other thought on that is, you know, you know, they keep telling us over there at the law, you know, that these are our future leaders, and if they can't manage getting across the street safely, then I'm concerned about our future leadership. Now, Jackson Street, I understand, you know, it's just a more heavily trafficked street, it's, it's trucks are on it.
But we know cars sometimes do not stop at, at, at crosswalks. But we know cars sometimes do not stop at, at, at crosswalks.
Well, there's no stop there. I mean, if a kid's walking across it, I'm not stopping, you know?
I think a lot of people don't realize that legally, they have to yield to the pedestrian.
Yeah, I like the rumble strip, I like the rumble strip on very streets.
This, you were recently traveling, and some crosswalks that didn't have stops, there were some fancy lights that could go on that lock up could, the person walking across it, the button, and it lights up. And so, the cars know someone's there, you can actually see them, and the problems like Jackson Street is, it's dark sometimes, and you don't actually see the person getting ready to walk across, but, and the pedestrian hit the button right leg, so the driver, I knew I need to just go down and be aware of whatever was going on, person crossed, the light went out, everybody, this is a, is another suggestion, it was, we were very frustrated, and I would take it.
And you know, they've got these illuminated signs now, you see a lot of stop signs now with, with red, the lights or something, and you could do the same thing with the yield sign there, too. Have them on a little photocell so that at nighttime comes on, and, you know, people, you know, yield, yield to pedestrians.
It's also would be one of those stop signs that has not had any studies done on.
Well, well, there was some time ago, but, but...
No, he's in the dinner room, Ruth.
Let's, let's...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, piggybacking on what Trudy said, downtown Indianapolis, my daughter goes to IU, what was IU, DUI, but it's now IU of Indianapolis, they have those for the students, if you're a walker, you just push it, and then all of a sudden, it becomes a stop or flashing like cautionary thing, but during the day, if there's no one digging to cross that, you just go through it like you normally would, and there's several down there, everybody tips to cross them, just to go to hit to their buildings.
I'd be keen on looking into something like that.
Why don't we, why don't we, I, I honestly, I had, I guess I didn't give you my second draft, and that draft had that knock in it.
I didn't even mention that you might have tried a thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I, I thought I gave that to you.
You wanted to take it out?
Yes, yes.
Take it out, okay.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah.
So, we've got the three streets, Madison Street, and Columbia, Franklin Street, and Norfolk Boulevard, Durham Street, and College Street, Franklin Street.
I would go for adoption, ordinance two-thousand twenty-four-oh-four, first reading, would that one change?
I would second.
Like I said, I apologize for that, that was not meant to be in there, that was for future discussion with the law and engineering study, and so, I'm sorry about that.
So, we have a motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, or less than? Okay, motion here. Okay, they'll be back next month for consideration.